... 9/11 yesterday. It's been a step three from this. Thank you. We're going right through.
... To the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with everything and justice around.
Walk in right now. Any changes to the agenda?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Two changes to the agenda. First item is an additional item. Item D, under General Business, you have a revised agenda in front of you, approving an incroachment agreement with Alco 34 law sheet. This was a follow-up document as part of the planning process for the Key Seal project. They wanted to file the incroachment agreement that was required, and we have the document now executed to the council. We're being asked to approve that. It was a late-minute add because we don't want to have to wait, obviously, till we can before we approve it. The mayor's also requested that item D, under Consent Agenda, approved agreement for legal services between the City Development and Market, Count Muntzen. He moved down to General Business as item E.
Oh, so item E has a renewal.
Item.
Renewal.
Renewal.
For beverage licenses.
Do we have anyone here for the refinancing of Market Village?
We do. We have tonight Paul Steinman from Springstead, excuse me, Baker Tilly, to give a very brief presentation on what the nature of the item is and then answer any questions.
I'd like to flip-flop that with the snowmobile organs or snowmobile and special use vehicles.
Okay.
On General Business. Anyone else have any changes? Josh, you had something to say. With that, anyone? Motion to adopt. Motion by Timmerman to adopt the agenda. By Seepers, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Agenda's adopted. We have no presentations, proclamations, or acknowledgements. Public comment. If anyone would like to address the council on anything that's not currently on tonight's agenda, please feel free to step forward. Once, twice. All right, public comments closed. All right, so consent agenda's been amended. Any?
Motion to amend consent agenda.
Motion by Timmerman.
Second.
Second by Schrutenberg. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. There's no public hearings, so... First item of General Business, the refinancing of Market Village.
Good evening. I'm Paul Steinman with Baker Tilly, formerly Springstead, and I'm here to present some information to you about Scott County CDA refinancing of Market Village bonds. So you have in your packet a memo, and I'll just briefly go over the memo, and then I'm happy to stand back and answer any questions that you have. So the purpose of tonight's meeting is the resolution that is in your packet, is for you to consider that resolution, and it relates directly to refunding or refinancing two bonds that were issued in 2010 related to the Market Village project. They were issued by the Scott County CDA. As you know, the Market Village bonds, they were used to fund construction of Market Village. It's a 49-unit senior low moderate-income family rental housing project just down the street here in Alco, New Market. And there were two bonds that were issued originally in 2010. One in the amount of $1,780,000, another in the amount of $4,445,000. The bonds both are paid directly through revenues of the project, combined revenues of the project, and support from the CDA's special benefits tax. The city doesn't have any responsibility for participating in payment of debt service upon these bonds. So the CDA would like to refinance these bonds due to the market supporting the refinancing and projecting to produce about $460,000 of savings through refunding these bonds. The term won't be extended. The term will be the same as it is currently, but there still would be significant savings in refinancing. So in short, the resolution that's in your packet is in legal terminology, and I'll convert it into easy speak. The city would be approving the issuance of the refunding bonds by the CDA. The general obligation of the city, your general obligation security, is being pledged to reimburse the county, and it is limited to $3 million of principal if the county general obligation is drawn upon. And the resolution also states that the mayor and city administrator are authorized to execute and deliver the indenture that is attached. So first and foremost, the city doesn't bear any active management or ongoing fiscal responsibilities for the project today. It has an almost nine-year history of operation, and it has been operating successfully with revenues around the 105% of debt service mark. So revenues slightly in excess of the debt service required on the bonds. The city's GO backing goes directly up to Scott County, so if the county were required to levy for debt service, the city would be required under its GO to reimburse the county for that debt service. And I hate talking about the bad parts of project, but a lot of terrible things would have to happen to get to that point. Obviously, it isn't impossible. But first, the project would have to be failing miserably, and no one renting rooms in the apartments in the project. And like I said, right now it's producing revenues in excess of debt service. Second, the CDA would have to have no other source of revenues available to it to step in and support the project. The CDA has a number of other revenue sources available to it in the event that might happen. Third, the debt service reserve fund. So there's a reserve fund with the bonds that's created just in case debt service isn't paid, debt service gets, the debt service reserve fund gets tapped. That would be spent if the project were to go upside down. Fourth, the county would step in and levy for, you know, for debt service. And then, fifth, the city would be required to reimburse up to its guaranteed $3 million of principal. So I hate to end with such a bad story, but that's how it could happen, and I'm doing that in anticipation of some questions about that. So with that, I'll step back and take questions on the item before you.
Is it fully leased out with a waiting list right now?
You know, I don't have all of the up-to-date institutional knowledge on the project. All I know is the...
Yes.
Okay, somebody's saying yes, yeah. I would assume so. I would assume so because it's producing revenues in excess of debt service payments, so.
And maybe the last little bit there was the reason why. I just couldn't agree with the reason why this wasn't a no-brainer. Maybe somebody else might be good, but I couldn't.
Objection.
Does anyone want to make a motion?
Make a motion to approve our solution made to item 6.
Second by Burr, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Thank you for moving me up on the agenda, of course. Not necessary, but...
Paul, do you know how soon the CDA needs the executed documents?
The closing is sometime here. I'll tell you, October...
The closing is October, the closing is December 12th, so we have some time to get the executed documents. Yep, yep, you're welcome. Thank you.
All right, next item on General Business, snowmobiles and special use vehicles.
Hello again. So I'm going to try to keep this short and sweet. I know we have people here for this item, and so I do want to go over it, but I'll just start sort of reiterating what Brady had presented back in August, and then specifically looking at the proposed amendments in the draft for you all. So first, as you all know, Minnesota state statute gives local jurisdictions the power to pass or adopt an ordinance that allows special use vehicles on the roadway. Special use vehicles being ATVs, UTVs, mini trucks, and golf carts. So our current ordinance, just to review, it regulates the operation of snowmobiles and ATVs only. All other special use vehicles are prohibited, and prohibits the use of them on city streets unless it's for the purpose of going to or returning from an area of permissible operation, generally outside of the city limits. Other areas of prohibited operation, sidewalks, parks, public places, and manners that create nuisances at speed, noise, things of that sort. And it also prohibits the operation of snowmobiles and ATVs for persons under the age of 14, and those of age 14 to 18 have to have a safety certificate or an endorsement on their driver's license to operate. So in the draft ordinance before you all, it regulates snowmobiles and special use vehicles. Special use vehicles specifically being ATVs, UTVs, and golf carts. Mini trucks are not included in this draft ordinance, so they would be prohibited. So in regards to snowmobiles, most of the language remains the same. It has generally not changed, so snowmobiles would operate for the purpose of going to and from an area of permissible operation. This would allow them to go, for example, from their home to the trail, to the trail to a restaurant or bar, and then back to the trail. They just couldn't go from their home to a restaurant within the city limits. Proposed amendments do include a change in the hours of prohibited operations. So prohibited currently is 10:00 PM to 6:00 AM. The proposed ordinance is 1:00 AM to 6:00 AM. And then there is clarified language regarding driving on the roadways. This is sort of what I had just explained. We just wanted to make it more clear that they would go from the home to the trail and then to a restaurant and not to the home to the restaurant. And it also added shared use paths or trails as an area of prohibited operation. So in regards to special use vehicles, again, ATVs, UTVs, and golf carts in this case, the proposed amendments are to, one, require a permit. That permit in the draft ordinance would be for a specified three-year term, for example, January of 2020 to December 31st of 2022. And it would be a $30 fee regardless of when someone applies for the permit, and it requires that the special use vehicle be insured. So as I mentioned, the current ordinance only regulates ATVs, so this one is adding the UTVs and the golf carts. Hours of operation would be between 6:00 AM and 10:00 PM, and then prohibited between 10:00 PM and 6:00 AM. It also prohibits the operation on shared use paths. However, it does allow them on the shared use paths along County Road 2 and 91, as discussed by the council at the last meeting. Prohibits operation of mini trucks, as I mentioned, and then does require a slow-moving vehicle emblem for golf carts. So the last major amendment proposed in this draft is regarding the age restrictions that were discussed by the council. Originally, staff was advised by legal counsel that we had to follow what state statute allowed. We were later on advised that we could restrict further. That was just based on more research and sort of ambiguity in state statute. So for ATVs and UTVs, 16 years old or older would be allowed to operate with a safety certificate and a valid driver's license. 15-year-olds would be able to operate, again, with a safety certificate and a valid learner's permit, but they would also be required to be accompanied by an adult, someone 18 years of age or older. And we did end up adding a provision which reflects state statute that would allow people or persons from 12 to 15 to operate, again, with the safety certificate and being accompanied by a person 18 years of age or older, only for the purpose of leaving the city to go somewhere where operation is permissible. So this reflects sort of what is currently allowed in our ordinance. Golf carts, similar to ATVs and UTVs, just doesn't require a safety certificate because that doesn't exist in state statute, so it's not required. And then there is no provision for 12- to 15-year-olds. So through conversations with Andrea, our city attorney, staff was advised that we do actually have to hold a public hearing. It is required. I believe that may be different than from what the council had been told previously. So I did want to bring that forth. Based on the timing, we weren't able to do it any sooner, get it on this agenda, or even the next one at the end of September. It'll have to be at the October 10th meeting. So at this time, we are not asking for the ordinance to be adopted, but rather we are just looking for feedback from the council on what you guys like or don't like, or maybe want to see changed in this draft. We would incorporate those edits moving forward and then bring you back a final draft at the October 10th meeting and hold a public hearing at that meeting as well.
Thank you, Amy. So, real quick, is there anybody here in the audience that is wanting to comment on this at all? Okay, then, all right. Then what we'll do is, if anyone has questions for Haley, maybe we'll get those questions going right now, and then after that, if you can make comments for anything, that'd be great, so. Does anyone have any questions? Josh?
And maybe you guys got into the lines counseling that I wasn't at. I don't know if it's on the agenda or not. I'm just curious about the consistency between snowmobiles and ATVs and golf carts. Why there's difference between time frames, especially the change, and maybe I can see if it was already 1:00 AM and then 1:00 AM argued. I was still making the argument there, why wouldn't we want them consistent across the board, and make the golf carts ATVs to 1:00 AM or keep some days at 10:00, so I'm just curious about that.
Yeah, absolutely. So originally, the intent behind the change was because snowmobiles, the culture behind them is just a little bit different. I think there's also an economic development standpoint where they do, they go ride for the day, and then they will go to a bar, they'll stop along their trail, go get a drink, come back, and keep riding, whereas ATVs, UTVs, and golf carts, these special use vehicles, are more so allowed for this general transportation purposes, which snowmobiles won't be operating under. So it's just the intent and the function behind the two, really.
Maybe some of it better than what everybody's done. My initial thought was, well, you're just saying. But if you put... So I mean, if they're going to have headlights, taillights, and be registered, and all that stuff, I mean, I see no reason not to have them on.
That's already part of this, too, is that if they're out past, does they have to have them? So, new point. And 10 o'clock PM, if people drive those over to, say, the raceway, it couldn't be past 10:00 AM when they drive them.
Baseball game or...
I would agree, I think they should all be on.
Does anyone have any other questions?
I do. We hold the hearing on October 10th. Can we still vote on that that night and interact?
Yes. Josh?
Yeah, just curious what the definition of accompanied is. Is it riding on a separate ATV, snowmobile, or not like actually with them?
Yes, correct. I mean, they could potentially be with them, but it really just means on a separate vehicle, riding next to them or by them.
And I guess that's right. I wonder, because a 12-year-old, 100 yards in front of me, am I still accompanying that kid?
We tried to look for a legal definition of accompanied, and I think, like everything else, we try a reasonable standard. If you're at home and they're 200 yards away and no line-of-sight visualization of them and what they're doing, 100 yards away, I don't think that's a company because you can't stop them from doing something. If you see a hazard, you can't. It should be just a reasonableness.
They have to be within a proximity to be able to influence and make them aware of unsafe driving habits and so on.
And I guess that's where, and I don't want to... Even if I'm from here to you away, who rides on ATVs, my kid's not going to hear me yelling, "Stop, stop, stop," so either I'm going to have to guard him, he's going to cut him off potentially, so...
Well, I'm hoping you're in front if you have a young child.
I don't know, I almost, I mean, there's the pros and cons. I almost want to have a line of sight and be able to see them versus have them see them crash behind me and not know it.
But we can't enforce a foot, like, say, 75 feet or something, because that change, you could stop and then they could go outside of it. We just didn't want it, we wanted a reasonable standard as opposed to 50 yards or 60 yards. DNR doesn't have anything in it that says a foot or a yardage, so we just kept it the same.
That's something I kind of want to get back to. First, is there any other questions?
Just with the ages and the consistency. I mean, they're different amongst the various things. When a snowmobile's just working, yeah, I can't remember how that one is, but do we want them consistent? I guess, my question.
Okay. Let's open it up. If you have anything to say on the topic, I appreciate your approach in the podium. Try and keep your comments brief. It's not a public hearing.
I'm a best talker.
Say your name and address, and then if you can try and keep it to two minutes, I'd really appreciate it.
Amanda Lynn, 1430 Overlook Drive. Did you get that?
Yes.
Okay.
We got one.
I actually have a question about this because of the fact that in our neighborhood and in our old neighborhood, we see kids driving the golf carts, the side-by-sides, stuff like that. When they say being accompanied by an adult, you're talking about, you know, how far they have to be apart. I actually think that it should be stated in there that a side-by-side or golf cart can have to be accompanied with an 18 person or older within that vehicle. Because if you say one, you know, you have to be with them, but if they get so far ahead, it defeats the point. I see knuckleheads all the time, you know, and what are we going to do to basically keep this as an honest thing? What are we going to do for the consequences? Are we going to ticket them? We can't ticket a 12-year-old, probably, so are we going to ticket their parents for letting them drive it, which I think should happen because they're letting their children drive these golf carts, and they know they're not supposed to. So I just want to mention that.
Provision in the ordinance, the parents would be cited.
For violation. Golf cart, you have to have the adult in the golf cart with you.
Okay.
ATV is a one-person unit, so that allows, that's why they have to accompany side-by-side because you can't have a 12-year-old and a 45-year-old on the same ATV.
Oh, definitely, definitely. But what is a mini truck?
Mini trucks are prohibited. A mini truck is a class of vehicles that's defined by weight and size.
Okay, so a side-by-side ATV?
No, no.
So in those also, would it be specified that they would have to have an 18-year-old accompanied in with the vehicle?
On a ATV, no.
Now, would that be a side-by-side? Even a side-by-side?
A side-by-side, same thing, so...
But wouldn't that be kind of like a golf cart, or...
I understand where you're going with that, but it's, we have to take into account the state statute allows that age to drive ATVs as well, and with them specified, they don't have to be in the same vehicle. We get their shoes for golf carts because we can make up the ordinance, but it's trying to be consistent with everything else in the state. So once they get outside of the city, they could just, the person could jump out and they could drive anyways. We're just trying to make it consistent with state statute, unless you have a different answer to that.
My understanding is kind of what Brady had said, of consistency with state statute.
Okay. I just don't want to see six kids screaming and yelling at 11:30 at night, cruising down the road, and the person driving is 12. So...
Well, that would be, under the ordinance, they couldn't.
Yeah.
And if, under that case, we would cite the driver's parents and the owner of the golf cart.
Okay.
Parents for that.
Okay.
And that provision isn't in the ordinance.
Okay, great.
I think, and I'm not sure, you're on exactly where I was going, though, I think, and I think we're being inconsistent with state law by requiring the age requirements to be the one they are, so I don't see why we couldn't say that they have to have an adult sitting with them on an ATV. And we specifically put in ATVs and snowmobiles that they have to, you have to be, I can't remember what it was, but whatever they're old, they can fit, basically. And so I don't see why we couldn't require an adult or somebody over 18 to be sitting there with them, because I, I mean, I find it pointless to have a 12-year-old riding three feet away from me or 100 feet away from me. It's not making any difference.
So what I'm hearing, both from RFPS and from you, Josh, is that on ATVs that accommodate more than one individual, the adult has to be on, what about situations? What about situations where it's a single place ATV? It would accompaniment within a reasonable, the reasonable task be adequate for that? Or you'd say, no, you can't? So unless, unless it can accommodate another adult?
Right now, I just kind of like to get feedback, and then we'll have a discussion about all this, so, thank you.
I need to leave, but I have to leave, but I wanted to make a comment.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck. Anyone might speak next?
Good evening. Brad Smith, 347 Brady Street. Couple of questions. On 7-3-4, talks about snowmobiles, I'm guessing that's in relevance. To and from an establishment, basically, like if you went from a house to, like, say, the church or to the Father's Day dinner, that you have to go outside of town to go there, to go back, or is that what you're saying? It was kind of unclear, where you couldn't go from your house to an establishment in town. You had to go to a pathway out of town, and then go into town, and then go out of town, and then go home.
That doesn't seem your own function.
Doesn't make sense, no.
I think the intent was for, yeah, it's only intended for general transportation services, so I'm not going to go down the street to my buddy's house. I'm using it to go on a trail ride, or if I'm on a trail ride, maybe to tell them to take gas or come and visit Double Wide or Ego's or Black's or something like that. But the intent is not to do general transportation. The way that it's written, the underlying assumption is that if I'm going from my house to church, or I'm going from my house to the, I'm not using it to trail ride, I'm using it for general transportation purposes.
So... All right. So I don't know if I'm fully on board with that idea, but, and then you had on part F on number two, the shared use pathways. What about the school park, school pathway on James, or the, you know, the pathway to school on Dakota and James, you know, over there? About those pathways, are those...
That's a city shared use path, so it would be prohibited.
Well, it's not listed as one of them. It says 91 and...
Yeah, 91 and 2 are open.
Yeah.
Everything else is.
So he's saying it's not permitted? And in that case, you would drive on the roadway, your golf cart or ATV?
All right. And then, under age of operation, I would think that you would probably want to revise that to part A. A person 16 years of age or older may operate an ATV, UTV, all that, but propose like 16 to 21 to require both a natural resource permit and a driver's license. You think if you're old enough to drink, that you don't have to have the, whatever the natural resources permit is, I don't know. I'm guessing, I don't have one, I'm guessing, so...
So under state statute, there's actually an age cutoff that for some of us in the room with grandfathers because of our age, that don't... So under state statute, there's actually an age cutoff that for some of us in the room with grandfathers because of our age, that don't require that. All other operators, and correct me if I'm wrong, under that limit are required to have it if they're operating regardless. So we're talking about special requirements of the city, where we're saying if you're going to operate in the city under certain, you have to have both, the license and the certificate.
Yeah, so there is an age upper end, isn't it? Okay. That's what I was kind of curious. It didn't reference that, so I didn't look at the statute, so.
Seventy-eight, seventy-eight, I missed that.
Okay, well, that was all I had on it, so, thank you.
Rob Schnickles, two six six eight one Oak Ridge Way. Applaud you guys for all your quick work and pretty good outline of what's going on. Seems pretty reasonable. My question is the the general transportation too. You know, a lot of times, you know, although we use it for leaving and going outside the city, it's nice to be able to run into town, fuel up, do that kind of thing. Another thing too, as far as, uh, snowmobiles and ATVs, right now, on my two ATVs, I think I pay sixty dollars every three years for a state sticker to operate. Snowmobiles do the same. I really don't have a a problem with the fee, uh, but it is kind of double. I mean, we're already, we're already giving money to the state for our snowmobiles and our ATVs. The special work, you know, use ones, the golf carts and some of the specialty vehicles haven't paid anything. And to use them things, I think it's reasonable to charge them. But just something to consider, I mean, if we have, when I lived in Lakeville twenty-some years ago, um, that was an, you know, a pretty frequent path for me if I was going to go out for a quick snowmobile ride. Captain Black's, St. Patrick's, Prior Lake, and back to Lakeville. And I think you'd be, uh, kind of, uh, closing that out for some out out of city people traveling into town wanting to use us as a destination, you know, for their day of riding or what have you. Does it think that might be something to consider?
The ordinance is drafted, would specifically permits that. It's not intended to prohibit that type of activity.
Okay, all right.
It allows for that coming from the trail to visit an establishment or take gas. And then the, what what is intended to restrict is, um, I'm going to get on my snowmobile and I zip around.
Buzz around.
Well, just buzz around town.
Yeah, yeah.
But, and and the difference between ATV is, again, the culture and nature of the item, its impact with regards to noise and other impacts.
Yeah.
In its operation.
Yeah, full interest in that, so. But yeah, that, uh, the general transportation thing is, it's kind of a big deal. That's, that's, uh, you know, running down to a ballgame or going to the racetrack and driving home, uh, it would be nice if that was allowed, but.
That's only for snowmobiles.
Okay, it's only for snowmobiles.
Everything else.
Everything else does, okay, perfect. Yeah, because the way it reads.
There's no baseball games in the winter, there's no racetrack.
Okay.
So yes, so only snowmobiles is direct to and from, ATVs, golf carts, that's are allowed for general.
Okay, I I read it and then.
The culture of snowmobiles is such that you typically don't want to do, hey, I'm going to go drive around city blocks.
Yeah.
So we tried to keep it with that.
Okay, but all right, well, thank you all very much. That's awesome.
Anyone else have any comment?
Glenn Ware, ninety-seven twenty Oxford. Just wanted to say I think you guys did a really good job on this. Just also wanted to echo Josh's comments about the times. In the summertime, I'd I'd love to take my golf cart up to the races, go watch a drive-in movie, go to a baseball game. All of those things tend to end after ten o'clock. It just didn't make a lot of sense to me that, you know, a snowmobile, I get the cultures different, but they're loud and they're fast. No problem with them coming into town, spending money, but my silent, slow-moving golf cart can't. Just didn't make a lot of sense to me.
Point taken. Thank you.
Thank you.
Last call, if anyone else, all right.
Nicole Kirkman, three three six, Wagon Way. Um, I just want to do a little bit of clarification because I know it's been brought up before, that whole transportation piece between, um, trail and business. How will you know if a person is coming from a business, going directly home, right? They're not traveling, they're on the trail all day, right? So it's very subjective, I guess. So say if I'm on the trail all day, I want to go Enzo, um, have a burger or wherever, or firehouse, right? Um, and then I go directly from there to home and I'm riding on city streets, how are you going to know where I came from?
Well, the way that it's written, you wouldn't be able to go from home to go get the burger. You would be going to ride out.
No, but I would be out of trail, right? Which you would have no idea if I'm on a trail because you're not going to see me, right? And you may see me go at like Enzo or Firehouse or somewhere else, and then you see me there, and then you see me leave there and go home, right? Are you going to assume that I've been day riding all day, or are you going to assume that I've just been rode to there and back? How would you know?
It would be applied the same way that is now, there'd be some discretion in regards to the officer.
It's very subjective.
Well, they have to discern. So, for example, if I'm not at the gas station, I'm not someplace else. The trail's over there and I'm buried back in the neighborhoods, and my snowmobile trail is running through all the neighborhoods, and I live on the far side of town.
Sure.
Pretty good chance you're using it for general transportation purposes.
And I totally understand, and I agree with that. I just want, I just, it's just very subjective.
I don't know if it's subjective, but you are correct. It may, the officer may not be able to always discern whether they are or aren't. It's not the only law or regulation where that is because there's a certain level of intent and where they're at geographically. But in an egregious violation, it probably wouldn't be that hard to discern.
I just want to clear that up, and I agree with the time change for the golf carts and stuff being to like one. Because of the games and stuff, they go later than ten, so, thanks.
All right, last call, any, anyone else? All right, thank you, everybody. Uh, it's, we're going to chat about it now, but it's, we're looking to have a public hearing, so we'll be more on. Josh, I bet you have a lot to say.
Oh, yeah, 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 I'm settled on you. Sorry. No, I mean, I think I still am confused with the the accompanied thing and why, I mean, it's the safety factor of that. The times I've already said. James Parkway, um, didn't think about that, I mean, but knowing that that's a fifty-five mile an hour road, you know, we're just looking at down the road, and if we change that eventually anyway, so perhaps it makes sense to consider. I mean, even to me, I think a two and fifty, and ninety-one is both being the fastest roads in town. Apply it to that one as well. I mean, get the, sort of the school, right now, there's pretty much the purpose of going down that road is to get to school. But it seems, for consistency's sake, and for now, it makes sense, I'd rather have them on that road, knowing that I know that we can go fifty-five on that road. A lot of folks don't, they go slower, but, um, it seems safer to have them on the. And then the whole trail purpose, general transportation purpose for the, um, snowmobiles, I think it just needs to be flushed up. Because I, I still, I guess I'm a little confused of, I don't own a snowmobile, but if I did and I wanted to go get gas or go to Firehouse. If I jump on a trail, so if I go from my house to a trail, does it take the trail to the nearest point possible, jump off the trail and go to Firehouse or the gas station, is that allowed? That's allowed, so we can do that. So if there's no trail near my house, and I guess there's no one to jump down, I'll go. If if the most direct route to the establishment is on roads, can I take that? Or do I have to go out of my way to jump on a trail to then jump off again? And that's where I I think there's some confusion.
Technically, the answer to that would be no.
From a practical limitation standpoint, the officer that's sitting there talking to the person, looking at their driver's license that says that they look have a block of eight.
Yeah.
There's a practical aspect of application of that. Brayne, is that, would that be a correct statement?
I think so. But it's, I mean, the point Nicole brought up and, I mean, kind of bringing up the same point, I mean, it, 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 it's really, it's really vague, it does feel pretty discretionary. I don't know, it'd be nice to clarify or come up with a better.
There's always ways, I think, to get around the law by using different methods, like you mentioned. I mean, the intent is the intent. There are times where it'll be obvious, um, but the intent is to have the.
It's used for trails primarily, and then you come into town to get home. But that's the intent. If you're, if you want to violate violate it, there, there's ways to do it, but generally, you're trying to keep them from buzzing around town. There's, I don't know if there's a good way to clarify that.
And and right now, they're not allowed to do it, period.
Well, they can go from the house to the trail.
The trail, but not to the bar or not to the gas station.
The way it's worded, if they're coming off the trail, they could go to the gas station because that's a permissible use. If they're coming off the trail, they could go to the bar because that's a permissible spot. But they can't just be driving around for general transportation. So the, it's always been, if you're driving through town on the trail, you can go to Enzo because that's a permissible spot. So you can go from the direct route to the trail to your house because that's permissible. And you can go to the gas station because it's permissible there, but just driving.
But the intent is that you can't get off the trail, go to the gas station, go to the Double Y, then drive over to Leo's, then.
Go grocery shopping.
Grocery shopping, cut across town, then go to Black's and Bullseye's, then cut back through town. The idea is that you're coming to a point in town to do whatever you're doing, go home, go to the establishment, and then you're leaving again by the most direct route.
Under the new.
That's the way it's always been, and we're not really going to be changing it. We are clear, we did rework language a little bit to try and make it clearer as to what, that's what the intent was, but that's what has been on it.
Probably changing it.
No.
The snowmobiles are such a different creature because, one, they have spikes that cause a lot of damage to stuff, and, two, they're so loud. And so that's part of the time restriction differences to try to minimize the impact to the rest of society about them cruising around so late at night. But it's always been, and even in the ordinance, if you're coming back on a trail at three o'clock in the morning, you don't just have to stop on the trail. You can drive it directly home from the trail at three o'clock in the morning if that's when you get into town. But that's it during that time, and that's the same with the other ATVs and the other ordinances, is you're not stuck outside the city. After one o'clock or two o'clock, you can go home. So you don't have to sit outside, but the the snowmobiles, we we didn't hear, we didn't, we didn't hear from the community that we need to change snowmobiles. It was ATVs, golf carts, so we didn't really mess with the snowmobiles.
On a snowmobile, you're going to eat up the pavement.
Hey, wait. Anybody who seriously rides a snowmobile, they don't want to ride alone. It wrecks the snowmobile.
Haley, can you take the power point back to, um, the ATV stuff?
Specifically, the fourteen to sixteen.
Or twelve, twelve to fifteen, sorry.
Just want to make a comment, excuse me. As it says there, that's only to go from your home to a permissible use.
It's not on the, on the city streets. So the company thing, I I think is a mute point because it's a very minimal piece inside the city.
And you can do it on a trail at twelve anyway.
Exactly.
No, that's a good point.
Yeah, I do want to note, uh, the accompanying pieces also for fifteen-year-olds who can operate for general transportation purposes.
But at that point, as a fifteen-year-old with a learner's permit, they have some education in regards to the general rules of the road, which is why we said the ages where they're at and the need for.
Why do they need, why do they need to be accompanied at that point? They have a valid learner's permit, they're they're knowledgeable of the streets?
I agree with that. The logic was that if you're driving a vehicle on streets, you need to be accompanied by an adult. They're still in that gray area where you need to have an adult there responsible, or a guardian, somebody. That was the logic behind it.
I would define the drop to that point. If it's, if you're fifteen, you have a learner's permit, you've gone to the educational piece or not. You're not cruising down thirty-five in your golf cart.
I just, I, I mean, I think. We would, we would want a learner's permit for a fifteen-year-old driving a car, so I can say, watch a couple of cars driving an ATV, just to save some. I do have a question about that third bullet, though. Wouldn't we want to change that to twelve to fourteen then? Because on the second bullet covers fifteen-year-olds, it doesn't matter if they go into a permissible bar or anything.
That's a good point.
Is it over that?
And I think that again is just mirrors the statute, because the statute does say twelve to fifteen.
How's a twelve or fourteen-year-old going to get a valid learner's permit?
So take out the valid learner's permit to strike that, yeah.
Then then you'd have to put the fifteen back in.
We could have fifteen-year-olds without the valid learner's permit. Saying that, leave the, leave the second bullet, the third bullet, make it twelve to fifteen, and strike valid learner's permit.
Yeah, twelve to fourteen.
Twelve, fourteen.
Twelve to fourteen, sorry.
No, 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 but to time's point, keep twelve to fifteen, just strike the valid learner's permit because you got a fifteen-year-old.
Haley, is the language in that third bullet point what the ordinance actually says, or is it a generalization for purposes of the presentation?
Yeah, I'm pretty sure I just copied and pasted and didn't delete it, but the draft ordinance does not have the valid learner's permit language.
That makes more sense.
Back to the golf cart piece, maybe we're seeing different things. It was specifically the golf cart where I just didn't feel it's necessary to have a, an adult accompanied. If you, if you're fifteen, you have a valid learner's permit. Am I alone on that?
People driving on city streets with cars and other crap, you're not comfortable or experienced perhaps with.
As Josh.
Some golf carts can go twenty, thirty miles around.
John?
I'm alone this time.
Okay, so we're letting, we're going to let a fifteen-year-old go alone on a ATV? On a golf cart? What are we doing with them on ATVs?
I'm, well, I'm asking specific on the golf carts.
We're still having them accompanied by an eighteen-year-old on the ATV, correct? So we keep the same for the golf cart.
If you're going to have it one way, it should be the same for both. But the safety piece is is the same for either of you, okay?
The accompanying item, is that no longer, uh, is that a moot point at this point in the discussion? Or do we have direction?
Keep it the way it is.
The way it is?
Yeah.
Okay.
As far as the times, so maybe I'm confused. I thought I heard you say something different than what I saw earlier. Snowmobiles currently, you can operate them up to one AM, right? Or not?
Currently it's ten.
Currently it's ten, okay. I thought I heard something else.
But to that point, I mean, I think, yes, you, because you were saying about the noise factor or whatever, and that you should allow them later or whatever. But I use the opposite.
Yeah. Because I do like the point that was made about, you know, if you're going to see a baseball game or something like that, and you took your golf cart to get there, and it's eleven o'clock, that shouldn't be an issue at night.
Generally speaking, golf carts and ATVs don't have the same type of nuisance aspects late at night that snowmobiles are going to have. Chief, do you see any major safety concerns with that?
ATVs are now noisy, and I do take verbal complaints of, you know, somebody going up and down the road with an ATV. They just by nature typically, and I'm sure the audience, they're, they're more than likely to be modified to increase power or whatever, and the mufflers get loud. Now, that's an easy fix. We have a noise ordinance. I could, if they're being rude, I could give them a ticket for violating the noise ordinance at one o'clock in the morning. If they're being obsessive and just driving around. So there's other avenues you can go to enforce that, but I would say generally, yes. ATVs are quieter than snowmobiles for sure. Golf carts are obviously the quietest if they're electric. But there are gas ones, but even them aren't very loud. Yeah.
If you have lights and they're, you know, for good safety reasons, I don't think they should.
Well, and thank you for this discussion. We're lost to continuously think about it, but it makes sense now why we did ten o'clock because the snowmobiles are going to have trails. So we're talking general transportation purposes for golf carts and ATVs, which is probably the logic behind the ten o'clock timeframe. Because snowmobiles are going to have trails, you know, whatever. So, I mean, it makes more sense in my head now, but I still. I mean, because we're not going to see, we're not going to allow a snowmobile at midnight riding around the roads because they're not often transportation purposes. We're not going to have that nuisance factor there. You could get pissed off and be nuisance on the trail. You could get pissed off and be nuisanceed on the trail or, you know, but ATVs now we're allowed on city streets, so it could be more of a problem.
I sure am. Wednesday night is a Wednesday night week, and I live in Newmarket, but I'd like to drive my golf cart over to thirty point. Um, we golf till ten o'clock, gets light up, I wouldn't be able to drive, I wouldn't be able to drive around.
I'm just saying, I get the logic, I still, I think it makes sense, cause you're still gonna get the obnoxious ones to ride around, whatever.
And you'll never stop that, there's, you, we put these ordinances here, these good people are participating, are, are gonna follow it. But there's always gonna be a contingent that won't, won't deal with that when it comes up.
Well, and then you can always get them through the noise ordinance.
Or there's always con, you know, reckless driving, the ordinance does have reckless, you know, so we can, even under that ordinance, charge them with that as well, so.
So what do we agree?
Changing the time.
Changing the time, okay.
I do have one other question.
Okay.
A fifteen year old who has a, who has a learner's permit, who can he legally drive in a vehicle with?
It's an eighteen year or older. Eighteen years older.
It's an eighteen, okay, alright, somebody else was thinking, it was just somebody else with a driver's license.
And we had, and we took out the guardian, right? Yeah, to reflect more of the state statute, you know, a, a person with a permit can drive with anybody eighteen year old.
Has to be a licensed driver.
License driver, right.
In a car, it has to be a valid licensed driver. And the golf cart, we didn't have.
So you're gonna let somebody drive a golf cart with somebody who's eighteen year older who doesn't have a license? So the blind ninety-eight year old grandma?
Because you're still a guardian, or you're still an adult with the common sense. Uh, one could say that if you had your license expended for speeding tickets and you're twenty-five, you still are an adult and better able to guide the fifteen year old.
I think as the city attorney said, there's always a potential way around. We, 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 we tried to, we tried to get to the intent with being the least restrictive as possible with regards to-
For the record, in a car, the person guiding the permitted driver has to have a valid driver's license.
But they don't have to be eighteen, or they have to be eighteen?
They have to be eighteen.
An adult.
So, one last little thing?
Please.
The definition thing, uh, my daughter Stella drives, she's eight, and she drives our one year, year old around in this little green-
ATV.
Whatever it's called, they're, they're electric. Would, would fit the definition of golf cart, I think as written, so I don't want my daughter getting pulled over. I mean, in, in, in an electric vehicle, not completely enclosed, generally having a small wheelbase.
Josh, this Josh, what did you just say?
I would really pull your car.
Maybe the last time you pulled her over.
She don't ride, yeah.
Alright.
It's something to consider, I don't know.
So at this point, staff is looking for direction as to how to draft the ordinance, so we can have a public hearing on it and vote on it at the time. Uh, what areas did we not clear up? What areas are we missing?
I think we, I think we cleared up everything we talked about, uh, the accompanying issue, the council's okay with the current language. The council's looking for ATVs and golf carts to be allowed to go until one AM, and-
At six, right?
Yep, and I think at the end of the day, what I asked for the conversation, the council's okay with the age restrictions of circa twenty percent. Except about twelve to fourteen, do you want to rid of valid learner's permit?
It's not in there.
Oh, it's not in there.
It's a type one.
So just so we don't do this, the next, so that one to six timeframe for ATVs and golf carts, unless coming from an establishment, is that same language gonna be popped over?
It, it's in there.
Is it?
Yeah, so if you're at, uh, the MFR, insert here, just so I don't favor anybody, uh, and you're leaving and you're going home, you can go directly to your house, you just can't, that's your whole driving room. And to make it very clear since on alcohol, all other rules, the road implied, it is a motor vehicle. You will get a DWI in a golf cart, an ATV, and a snowmobile, just like anything else, cause once you're on the road, it's just-
Or an electric little car.
I think the only thing that we didn't touch on is if we're okay with the three year and thirty dollar permit.
Yeah, and really the purpose of the thirty dollars is to cover administrative costs for-
But they did bring up a very valid point about the DNR and the state have the permits that go on the-
If a registration, to operate it off road. And one of the, one of the quick justifications that is now you're driving it on city streets and roadways inside, which requires a permit, and I think it can be justified that way.
Israel, he covers processing costs, the state requires it for their purposes, they have a different checkbook than we do. And so they're covering it for their purposes, and so for the items that we do, we're covering it for our purposes. There is, there's time and expense related to the staff just to process it, those stickers from talking to other cities are not inexpensive. Um, we, and other cities have found that this reasonably covers their cost per transaction on average to be able to, to process these.
But are other cities making just the golf carts have the sticker? Or all of these ATVs, UTVs, golf carts all have the same sticker?
In our case, they would all have the same sticker.
But would all, would other cities too, they would just do the golf cart? I'm just wondering, because if they've already been accepted through the state, then do we want to implement another thirty dollar fee on them?
If they require specific, if they requiring permits, they're charging if we, if they don't require a permit. So some cities allow the ATVs without requiring a permit.
They don't require, cause the, the fees for covering the cost of the permit processing. I think you'd be fine if everything but the snowmobiles. Is that it? I don't know that you would need a permit on a snowmobile, cause you're not using those to go from-
And we're not requiring them for something.
Yes, snowmobiles don't require a permit.
One thing I don't think we discussed, or I didn't see it anywhere, was we have licensed people from outside of the city who wanna operate their-
So, so wait a second, if you're going to operate in the city, you need a permit. So let's say, and we had some people at previous meetings say, hey, I live outside of the city limits, I drive in town to get gas, they can do it, they would need, enough?
They can still come and get a permit.
Yes, anybody can get a permit. Um, I talked about the gentleman who lived in Webster and who likes to go to the Red Fox, is it Red Fox? And I advised him, once, you'll need a permit to get into town, so come by, stop, get a permit, for three years, you can drive in town. Under the ordinance.
What about, is there months of operation from the ATVs and UTVs and golf carts?
No.
Are we good, guys?
I'm sure on the golf carts, the part about fifteen years of age, accompanied by a person eighteen years older. Here's my example, my fifteen year old with a learner's permit is taking my six year old to dance lessons on the other side of town this year. And how I won't go do that, because I would have to do it, so just an example of concern. That was the only reason I had a learner's permit. I won't have to worry about it next year.
Are we good? Or is the, is?
Well, okay, I'm gonna be, I'm gonna be devil's advocate, I'm just asking some questions. I don't do any of the ATV, I don't, I'm just moving off, so just bear with me. I own, let's say I own a, a side by side, um, just because I know that I have visitors that come to the bar, the restaurant, with their ATVs, UTVs, or whatever called. And they live out of town, and they're coming to my restaurant to eat. But they've already blocked the sticker through the state and the DR, and now we're asking them to buy another one, just to be able, are we going to limit it?
No, no, you can, you can go from a point into a point out without needing this, because that's not general transportation. If they might cruise around town, so if they're riding in a permissible area outside of town, they will just wanna come and get gas, or just go to an establishment and need it.
As long as we're not being-
Actually, that provision was taken out for the special use vehicles after we changed it to allow them for general transportation purposes. Staff had a conversation that regardless of the intent of use, all special use vehicles need to have a permit.
Okay, so I'm gonna say that I'm, I, just for businesses in town, I think that's gonna hurt. It, it, we, there's quite a few people that come by on ATVs that are not from in town, people who's-
I'd ju, I'd just like to add, I think one of the, as from staff, one of the big reasons that we think that should be required is so we can verify their insurance, so driving on public streets in our city limits. I have ATVs without insurance. Um, I can go get my perm, my sticker at the bank, and they don't ask me for my insurance, I just did it. Um, so I could get my state permit, and they have not asked me to provide proof of insurance. So that is the reason for the city permit.
Cause they're all driving in the city without- And it's just for driving off road. It's not, and where it's allowed to be.
I just, I, I would hate to see it hurt businesses in town, but I mean-
I would, I would, then Josh can maybe, my Josh, my Josh, over here. Not this Josh, my Josh, who is wearing the same uniforms.
Lucky.
Yeah, but, and he can correct me if I'm wrong, in that case, if we saw them operating without a permit, we'd maybe stop them and go, what's going on? Oh, I came from the trail to the firehouse, okay, just so you know, you have to have a permit to operate in town. Continue on your way. You know, it's not our, it's, they might get stopped, but, cause how do we know it's not anybody else without a permit? But we, there's the intent and the spirit, they're not hopefully just gonna be whipping donuts and driving around and everything else, then they might get a ticket. But we're, we're never heavy handed anyways, so I don't see it changing. This whole exercise is to make it so we know, people know the rules have, you know, so that, that's, that wouldn't fit the spirit of why we drop a ticket on them. Well, nope, you don't have a permit, that's not, it's, and I, even the first time, if somebody who's a resident using it, they're gonna get the warning, go get your ticket, we see, you know, go get your permit, we see it. If you just get caught again, you're gonna get a ticket, so, do you know what I mean? I meant, that's not, it's not the purpose.
I mean, the whole, I was just concerned because I thought they had a special proof of insurance, the state, and what if, if they're not doing that, it's just-
Do you think I'm wrong, Josh, on that? I mean, that's-
And I was gonna, I was gonna, just, yeah. Just with the ATV thing, we had an ordinance, there's a lot of points, but one citation was made about it, it was a specific incident. So I don't see anybody getting, you know, unless they're Josh's daughter, I don't see anybody getting that.
Profiling. Actually, Josh will get the citation. Yeah, we give Josh the ticket, yes.
I think we're in a good spot, staff has direction, everyone's good. Alright, ready to move on? Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
So if Josh's daughter is drunk, does he get the citation? Yes. Well, he'd probably be arrested for child in need of protective services, actually.
Okay.
No one carries him off to police department.
Next item on general business, police department redesign.
Josh, when do we ever shut that back door and call?
Are you getting cold? I have a blanket in my-
It's hot.
It's hot, flies, everything else. Fine.
Okay, so tonight we're, have a presentation on the police department pre-design report, that was prepared by Leo Daley in conjunction with our own project team, which consisted of the architect, the chief of police, myself, the assistant city administrator, and the public corps superintendent. What we're looking to do tonight is to review the options for the new police department space, provide recommend, provide recommended design options, and then receive direction from the council on the preferred design option. The intent would be at that point, once we have a preferred design option, that we would prepare a contract or agreement with Leo Daley for the actual construction, design, bidding, and construction management of the project, that would come back to the council at some meeting. I think for those that are present tonight, and those that might be viewing, um, I think it's appropriate for us to go over a little bit the history of the police department. And I'm gonna change the view here, so that it's a perfect presentation for those at home. So a little bit about the history of the police department building. So the police department is located in a hundred and two year old building. It was used primarily as the classic one room schoolhouse before the creation of the independent school districts and the Lakeville School District, in which it's currently located. Um, in the nineteen fifties, it served as the Elko City Hall and the Elko Post Office. Since that time, up until about two thousand, up until two thousand and six, the post office moved out and it became, uh, solely the city offices, a few years after that with the merger of the police department, um, moved in after the Elko City Offices merged with Newmarket, city offices with the merger of the city. Uh, initial remodel, uh, of the building, so we've already conducted some work on the building already. This was intended to be an interim solution until a new police department facility could be built. Essentially, what we did is we constructed walls within the open space that was currently the city offices, it was primarily open, except for the kitchen, the bathrooms. What is, what used to be the post office space is now just a cold storage, or a storage area, and the chief's office, um, located here. So this whole, this whole area of the space was open and was just a couple of workspaces for city staff, and then the council chambers at the time. Um, while that space, I don't know that anybody could call it anything other than substandard, um, it was better than the space they were leasing at the time, believe it or not. And the cost of throwing up a few walls was sixteen thousand dollars, we recovered that in less than a year in the lease savings. This was intended to be just a quick fix that was more cost effective, that gave them better space for an interim period of time. So back in two thousand and seven, what was interim? Well, the project, we had a projected population of thirteen thousand by twenty twenty. At that time, we had a projected population of twenty thousand by twenty thirty. We'd built a hundred and forty new single family homes the year before. Interim was not assumed to be long term. Move forward to twenty twelve. We had four single homes built in the previous year. We had forty-nine single family homes built since two thousand and seven. The impact of the recession was continuing to be felt in our residential housing market locally, and interim now appeared to be longer, a decade or more. So we looked at a phased renovation of the police department. Uh, we realized that there was a need for a longer term strategy. It was a lower cost at the time than new construction. It did not require acquisition of land, and it would address the deferred maintenance issues with the existing asset. The building had some issues that needed to be fixed, if you're gonna keep the asset, whether you're remodeling for a PD or not, you have to address these issues with the building. And it provided us the flexibility to push out new construction until there was a need for substantially larger space. So when you're building a brand new construction, you're typically building a space that's gonna get you out some period into the future, twenty, thirty, forty years with elbow room. At the size the department was and projected to grow, you would be substantially overbuilding, and that also means cost. And so the thought was to push it out far enough that the community tax base had proportionally grown to support the cost of building that future facility. As you can see, this really was about the most cost effective way to provide reasonable quality law enforcement space for a decade or more until we were a bigger city and could afford a new police department that had a longer lifespan. So we engaged on the phased renovation of the police department. Uh, we made the police station handicap accessible, um, by improving the front entrance, that was completed in late two thousand and three. We constructed a garage for the police department. Um, previously there, we're locating what was the old Newmarket Library, where, um, Northfield Ambulance currently resides. They parked their cars over there, so they would have to go change, they'd have to go change, go get the car, bring the car over, change. It was very highly inefficient, the vehicles weren't there, and there's issues with securing elements within the cars, you had to take it out all the time. And phase three was the tech pointing of the exterior of the building, um, which as far as we know, had not been done in several decades. And that was completed in the summer of twenty fifteen. And then phase four was intended to be interior improvements, a portion of what we're doing, although not to the extent that we're discussing, that would meet code- although not to the extent that we're discussing, that would meet code OSHA and ADA standards. It was less of a remodel than we're talking currently. The total cost of the one through three improvements which were completed was $325,000. So we started with this, and currently have this. But there still continue to be issues with the interior of the building, as you all know, the council followed it, and I don't think that I'm overstating it by saying that the space is substandard, inadequate for operation of a modern police department, as well as there are some issues with it. We know that we have mold in the building, which we've taken some very short-term measures, but if we do not, we still have to address that. There's also a few structural issues with the roof that we still need to address, as well as the bathrooms and other things not being ADA accessible, et cetera. So in 2019, how long is interim? Well, we have a projected population by 2030. Projected population of up to almost 12,000 by 2040. The impact of the recession is continuing to be felt. We are starting to see plats come through, but we're seeing within the last 24 months the first plats that we've seen in a decade. And although development is starting to pick up, it's just starting to pick up. We're on the beginning of what we believe will be a strong development curve over the next several years. Interim is still significantly longer. So, the recommendation to council was to take a step back, hold on the renovation, and review the scope and nature within the current context, knowing that we're now talking in an interim period for that may be a possibly much larger facility of being a couple decades or more. The floor plan that we had for the original plan worked around the post office, which was still in the building at the time, and the space could be used more effectively if we now had the whole canvas, so to speak, to work with. There was an understanding of the space, that the space needs, the department may have changed over time based on the experience and greater expertise within the department. At the time that we designed this, it was based on who we had on the department at the time. They don't have the same breadth of experience with law enforcement facilities that we had and have now. The term of the police department being housed in its current location has continued in length then, and is greater than the initial assumptions, and the police department has indicated that if it is not properly, property, if the property is not remodeled, the space may need the apartment needs for longer. So if we do something, we can get it proper and do it the right way, we could get more time out of it than the other ones would. And the structure has continued to deteriorate. That plan that we started to work on, the phased plan, was initially devised over a decade ago. And so the, we've already exceeded the timeframes for what it was originally intended for. So we decided, for all these reasons, we need to take a look. The thought was to still maximize the use of the structure for the police department and the overall usable life of the existing structure, and reexamine the project with the emphasis on greatest value versus lowest cost, which was the primary driver a decade ago. So the existing structure, as you've seen, consists of the garage that we proposed, it has a storage area, which used to be the post office, that, a, a single office for the chief of police, other various storage areas, and a general open area for officer squad room operations, and an detoxilizer room. We have a small evidence area, and when I say small, I'm going to put the emphasis on small, that has a number of, of issues. One is, for instance, ventilation. If there's a marijuana bust, the whole police department smells like pot. And it's extremely small. Yeah.
And marijuana. Figure it out.
And it, and it's, and it's tight. It doesn't have a lot of space. It also doesn't have a lot of the same depth and nature of security protocols that you would have any modern evidence room. Again, this was a very quick Band-Aid. Kitchen facilities are the same kitchen facilities that have been there since 19.
66.
66, when it was constructed, and so on, bathrooms, when addition was put on. So we retained the services of Leo Daley to come in and look at options for renovation. Two options that are presented in your report that survived that are option C, this is renovation within the existing footprint of the building. I'll leave it to the team and the architect to talk about the more specifics of it, I'll just go through it very briefly. It preserves the existing garage, moves the mechanic into the garage, as you've talked about in the report, but essentially it provides for a police department with modern space for up to 13 officers. Is it ideal? No, because you have an existing footprint that you're working within, you don't have an infinite amount of space to work with, so you're restricted both with regards to the size of the department that you can have, and that's limited to a great degree based on locker space and desk space. But it does a lot of things. It improves the evidence area, it does provide a reasonable locker and area, it provides for bathroom, modern bathrooms, showers, things like that. As an officer, and you've all seen it on cops, you run into a lot of things, from chemicals to bodily fluids and all kinds of things. Helps to be able to take a shower when you get done with your shift, so you don't have to take it home with you, or if you need to during a shift. It provides for interview space. If you go back to the previous, the existing floor plan, where do you interview a perp, or a suspect, or a victim? You don't. You have to do it in the middle of the squad room. So if I'm Josh, and I've got a guy handcuffed, and I'm writing a report and getting ready to process, and I have him in the department, he's sitting across the room from me, in handcuffs, and I got to keep an eyeball on him. What do I do if I need to go to the bathroom? What do I do? I'm the only one there. I don't have a really good way to secure that individual. So there's an officer safety issue, and also a practical function. Right now, if we have somebody that we need to secure, we don't have a way to secure them on site, we have to drive them all the way up to jail right away, or leave them in the car. That's what, those are the options that we have. So we have those capabilities. We have interview rooms, we have a hard and soft interview room. A hard interview room is where you basically have somebody who you don't want to give anything available to them to wreck, and there's nothing for them to wreck in the room. Those are the classic ones you see in the interview ones, you know, and on TV. And then you have the soft one, which is where you're typically going to be interviewing victims, you can use it double as a conference room or as a workspace for officers. You have a conference room, which can also serve for training, break room, et cetera. And you have offices, not only for the chief, but also for expansion for investigators, administrative use, et cetera, going forward. You also have sufficient space for future administrative staff and for officers to be able to operate within the department. Again, this would be what you would consider to be a 13 officer department. We currently have.
Five.
So we'd be able to double the size of the department. We also looked at option D, which was renovation with an addition, where we would take, this is the existing addition, we'd basically square it out, that would give us approximately 300 additional square feet. All of the same elements are present within the building, but it would allow us to actually have locker rooms rather than a locker room hallway where people are moving around, it's still secure, it's still within the interior of the department, but you would actually have a separate locker room within the building. It would provide for a little bit more space with regards to evidence, and allow for a little bit better securing the building with regards to your heart, your detoxilizer, your hard interview room. So we went out and got renovation estimates for both of these. And what we came back was an estimated range of 1.2 to 1.6 million for the existing footprint, and if you expanded it out to the, the renovation, it was up almost $2 million. And that would be an all-in cost, so that'd be soft cost furniture fixtures, equipment on the project. The estimators and the architect both suggested that, given that we're seeing those kinds of per-square-foot prices, that new construction was a reasonable option. This was something that had changed from when we were looking at it a decade earlier. We looked at it, there's a couple reasons why we feel that that, those numbers were that high. One is the current market. So in discussions that we've had with various contractors, they'll tell you that right now contractors can, in some certain sasses, name their price. We've talked with contractors that have told us that they price things hoping they don't get it, because if they get it, then they have to figure out how to get the project done. So that's part of what's driving it. Part of it is one of the contractors works in, based it on prevailing wage, based on the environment and the subs that they use, and so there's quite a wide range. They also priced it with sufficient contingency for doing work within an existing 102-year-old building in those unforeseen circumstances, and any estimator, regardless of those circumstances, never wants to be the little bidder on a project. So there's obviously some additional contingency built in. Regardless, it gave us an order of magnitude and showed us that the bubble between new construction and renovation were starting to become close enough that staff recommended that we maybe take a look at new construction. So what's the alternative? Well, it's an addition to city hall. Why city hall? It has less site constraints than the existing site. Once you've built it out, that site does not allow for any further expansion of the building, so you're time-limited to that 13 officer department. You have greater operational efficiencies by consolidating all the city services at city hall, and it allows towards, moving towards the establishment of municipal campus. So option E was developed. This provides for all of the same elements that we saw in the previous plans. This design was not done to the same level of detail, but the space is sufficient to provide for a forced all garage, similar to what we'd have in the other location, all the basic elements with regards to interview rooms, locker rooms, et cetera. But because it's a little bit larger facility that can be accommodated on-site, it could provide up to a 21 officer department. So about 60% larger than you would be at the other site. So how do we evaluate the alternatives? Well, we took a look at project costs, that's obviously the primary driver in the project, what can you afford? The lifespan, what do you get for what you're paying? So we're getting into the value proposition. The potential use of each building, again, someday the department will be bigger than 13 officers or bigger than 21 officers, and there will be a need for possible reuse of the space. How easy is it to reuse it, and what are the potential options for the reuse of the space? Department operations, the return on existing improvements, we've already made investments in the other, other facility. You would be making investments on facility here. We've made investments in this building, how do you get returns on that? And then long-term impact on future operations for city buildings. Ultimately, we ended up with multiple options. Obviously, under the renovate option, we have the existing footprint, and then we had the existing footprint plus the small addition. Given the cost of that and what you get, and that that option really is revolving around a more cost-effective option, we feel the only real option, if you're going the renovate route, is to go with the existing footprint and do the renovation, and it gives all of the, the existing elements that we're looking for in the most cost-effective way, but it's working within that existing footprint, so it's not ideal. The new construction? Well, if you build a new building here, you have a building over there, you have to do something with it. The most cost-effective thing to do is to tear it down. You tear it down, hollow away the debris, you fill the hole, you tap on it a little bit, and there you go. That overall is going to be the most cost-effective solution. It's less costly to tear it down than it is to do any sort of renovation, and you eliminate the long-term costs of maintaining the facility. The other option is full renovation. Well, let's turn it into what it's, we assume that we're keeping it, and you're going to turn it into whatever that long-term use is going to be, like a community or a senior center, or whatever that use might be, and you would fully renovate it. Now, that cost might not be quite as much as renovating it for a police department, you don't need all the extra walls, you don't need an evidence room, but you're still going to have to do interior remodel, quantities are going to be a little less, labor might be less, but there's still a significant expense to it. Or you do minimal renovation. You address the things you need to do to maintain the asset, you basically leave it as open or storage space or some other interim use, but it's not professional space going forward, and that buys you time to, A, determine what you want to do with it ultimately, and then figure out a way to fund what you want to do with it ultimately. You wouldn't be losing in, in investments you've already made in the site. We, the things we did so far have been to preserve the asset, and you still have a garage that can be used for any multitude of purposes, and a parking lot that can be used to serve the facility, just not for the police department. So staff is recommending one of those two options to the city council. So renovation within the existing footprint, it's the lowest-cost option, meets the anticipated police department needs for 13 officers, can roughly double the size of the department, possible community space for senior center reuse in the future, so you're preserving the asset for a future use, and it uses the current investment, or uses current investment in handicapped accessibility, tuck pointing the garage. There's more risk in renovating the building. We, it's a renovation, it's like any other type of project, you don't know what you're going to be getting into. There's a general rule of thumb, it's not a hard rule, but there's a rule of thumb that when you start getting to the point where your renovation costs are more than 50% of the building, you should be considering whether or not new construction is an option. The new site is 60% more, but you get 60% more use out of the, of the site, and there's no room for expansion on the site. Addition to city hall. You can, 22 officers, which is 15 more than current, roughly three times the size of the current department. The new construction is less risky than renovation, it allows the PD to be used for storage, or some other use, food shelf or some, you know, on a part-time basis or other uses, so it's not that it's useless, but it'd have some limited use. The addition is nearly 1,000 feet bigger than the PD, has a positive impact on, on the PD because of its proximity to city hall, it provides efficiencies overall with regards to city's operation. The structure can be built in such a way that it could support solar panels, this, we're starting to get into the real fringe elements here, but for not much expense, you could accommodate that, which would allow us to reduce our costs and energy savings at city hall. It's a small offset, but a long-term offset. And the reuse of space should, the PD move as possible, and the potential expansion of PD. So when you're doing tilt-up panel construction here, that's going to be easier to remodel and reuse than doing, building it out as a PD and then renovating it to be like a community center. You're going to pay a premium to do the remodel for a lower cost upfront. So what is the preferred option? Well, when we did this, we hoped that when the numbers came back and we'd done the analysis, it would be really clear, there was a very strong value proposition greater than the other, any other location. And if you take a look at those smaller items, but look at those core elements, what you find out is that you pay what you get for. You pay 60% more for 60% more facility, 60% more lifespan than you would have at the other facility. But the question still comes back to, what is your budget? I've used this analogy, I think, to talking with all the council people at some point. Yeah, I'd really like that Ram 3,500, I can pull my fifth, I could pull fifth wheel with it, I got more storage capacity, blah, blah, blah. But you know what? All I can afford is 1,500, I have to live with that. So that's a policy decision that we can't answer for you. We can tell you the pros and cons in some of the value elements, but what the budget is, is really council decision. And then, and so based on that, what's the best value? So if you can afford the addition to city hall, is that the best value? Or is it the renovation? If you can't afford the addition on city hall, you really only have one option. So we'd suggest that to the council that, starting the discussion, the first question is, what's your budget? Because that, I think, will drive the rest of the, rest of the discussion. At this point, I didn't go into a lot of detail, although the report that was prepared by Todd, Todd, there's, there's a lot of detail in there and a lot of background. Do you have any questions for the project team before the council starts its discussion? So I'll leave this up in case there's a need to reference any of the plans, and I'll just sit out here.
All right, Tom.
I think that we should just get one of the new.
What's that? What's that mean?
I think that.
Which direction?
What they're, in right now is embarrassing, to be honest.
I know.
So I think that we should just do a little review.
So you'd say a little review?
Yep.
I do have a question, Tom.
Yes.
I do have a question. If we can, do you know what the tax impact would be for either one of these?
The tax impact for the renovation was roughly, well, the council has determined in previous budget discussions that we would be using the capital outlay fund, where we're transferring, basically using LGB dollars, which are not property tax revenues, to fund this project in addition to other capital projects that we're looking at. Based on the cash flow analysis that we've done on that, that shows that it's reasonable that we would be able to fund the renovation project if it's around a million dollars, or a little more, without a tax impact in addition to the estimated cost for the other projects that we're looking at. It'll get us very close, significantly bite it down. If we're looking at the addition option, it's more expensive and exceeds the capacity of the capital projects fund, to fund that additional cost plus everything else. to fund that additional cost plus everything else. I haven't run the specific numbers because, quite honestly, the numbers at this point are kind of high level with regards to the addition. But you'd be, look, it's, you can do the quick math. It's roughly twice the cost of the million dollars we used as an estimate previously. So, it'd be roughly twice the tax impact. Now, that would be zero, so it'd be back to like 4.5 in addition. There's a lot of ways in which we could structure the payment. So, you could use the capital funds project or fund.
And spend it out on everything that we're proposing, knowing at some point in the future, it's not going to be able, it's going to drop, drop out of capacity at some point and you'd have to levy for it. And you'd probably see a big jump if you took that approach. The other approach is you could feather it in over a period of time. And there's a lot that can happen over time that may change that financial picture.
But you, one way or another, pardon the phrase, you'd have to pay the piper. There just does not appear to be, based on our current financial projections, the capacity to be able to fund this project without a tax entry if you went with the, with the addition option versus the renovation. Does that answer your question?
Yep, thank you.
My first, I just, the dollars scare me. It's a lot of money. I just have this, I don't know, I have this concern that we're just committing to so much financially over a long period of time. I mean, the new construction, I just don't know that we can afford it. But I'm open to ideas.
If we renovate the existing police station, it's not a long-term solution. At some point, that building, they're going to have to relocate in. We're already talking about potential of having more of a campus here. We talked about, when we, when we did our little retreat, we talked about a campus. We talked about redoing the police station. We talked about the need for a community center. That building could actually be turned into a community center with very little and potentially no impact because we can potentially get grant funding for it. So, to me, the long-term solution for the police department is here.
Yeah. Don, once we're here, Josh and Kate?
I'd be swayed. Either way, dollars scare me. Financially, it scares me, but I also feel that they need to be here. Long-term, it makes more sense to just make the move and have it here and start the campus.
Okay.
I agree with that. I mean, I, I just think, in an ideal world, if money were no object, it's a no-brainer. It's a value quicker. I hesitate to say just do the renovation piece. It feels like I'm buying that five-year-used car when I could spend 60% more to get a car that's going to last me. You know, maybe it's not the same analogy because I'm going to get further value out of it. So, are we not throwing away 1.2 to 1.6 million, but are we just delaying the pain of the 1.9 to 2.8, which is going to turn into 2. something to 3. something by the time we actually do something here? Either way, it's a lot of flipping money. And that's just, and I don't want to throw, and I'm not going to throw out the other option of doing nothing, but it's, if we're going to spend the potential up to 1.6 on renovating.
I'm not going to make a hard argument on anything. I mean, we've all been through the police station. It's not exactly our shiny jewel of the city, though.
The assets within it are shiny and jewel-like.
Especially in that storage locker, evidence locker. No, I, I feel like we're moving too quick when it comes to expanding or having a city campus. I mean, we, I just, I feel it's premature and I, I, I struggle with it because, John, you're right. I mean, if it's, if the long-term vision of the city is to have everything kind of within this area, then from that perspective, it makes a lot of sense. But we're looking at, I mean, we just got through our budget. We're looking at an 8% tax impact. That's preliminary. We're going to cut some things off, I know, when we get to the end. But that's just the tip of the iceberg. I mean, there's more things that we're going to be needing to finance. We're not, the police department's not at a point where it's going to be growing, where it's going to max out that facility for quite some time.
But what do we eventually need? Like Josh said, it's...
We're eventually need...
It's expensive.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm okay if I'm...
So, one thing too you remember is with any renovation, no matter how old the home is or the building is, it extends its lifespan. And so, your 1.6 could go to 1.8. So, then you're only, you know, 100, 100 less than the 1.9.
I'd like to have a little construction.
It can but not usually as likely.
I don't know how many, I financed countless projects of new construction and not a single one has came in. Even the coles just spot on. It's always a minimum 10% higher than a new construction.
Well, I think there's an option H potentially too is, I don't think, but we have to do something. I mean, I, I mean, it's a no-brainer. So, it's option C or one of those options and we look at something else we can scratch. Another project that, another thing that we put money into. So, if we're super concerned about the budget stuff and we want to look at that, I think then we look at what else is there that we take off the table? Because this, I mean, we can't keep kicking this can. It's not in the can anymore. It's a crunched-up piece of crap that we have to replace, so.
I think it's, yeah, doing nothing's not an option. I think we probably all agree on that.
I have a question for the architect. Is there potential to do the addition back here with less square footage? Right now, it's designed to be 21 officers. Could it be designed to be 13, like we would do for...
Yeah, right now, it's approximately 5,600 square feet compared to 32 or something like that.
29.
29. Yes, it could get a little bit smaller, but at the point where you're building a new building, you, you could trap yourself in the future. So, the extra square footage is probably worth it in the end, in the long run. Can we shave out a little, you know, 500 to 1,000 square feet? Probably. We did it very quickly, so as an estimate, just as a...
So, what's the cost per square foot?
Anywhere from 250 to 300 is kind of, I think, in the range that we're looking at.
If I could, questions? Did the cost for renovation include doing something with these people while you're doing the work? They got to work somewhere.
Negative, just move in here.
Oh, okay.
Couple of computers, a couple of computers here.
And I was also curious, Tom, probably, if there's any uses identified for the existing building if you did build here. What realistically, I mean, has there been anything other than just kind of guesswork about what you'd use it for?
The prevailing logic up until this point was that it would be used for some sort of community space that could be leased out for organizations, city use, other people. Mark has indicated that there is a, and I know this because we get calls on it all the time for additional community space within the community. So, that's been the kind of assumption related to it. That doesn't mean it's the only use, but that's been the assumption with regards to the reuse of that space following the police department leaving.
Storage too.
And interim can be used as storage. There's never enough.
There's never enough space.
And I know one thing about John's question about making it smaller. Because we had talked about that initially as the design, what about shrinking it down? Panelized cement construction. You can adjust it a little bit, but to make a smaller addition on, it's just...
If you're going to do it, that's about as small as you'd want to add on because if you're, shrink the building, you're just shrinking kind of the space inside and it, for the amount of money that you save, say 100,000 or 200,000, you're still building this huge new. It was like the smallest that they thought we should move into. Otherwise, it didn't make much sense because you're not getting much more square footage over that one then, long-term wise.
So, if we did new construction, how would that actually fit in with the plan of city campus?
So, the campus work that's been done so far is conceptual. But the intent is that, the study that was put down back in 2008 proposed that you would establish a municipal campus that would include everything except for public works, where you would have potentially, long-term, the capacity to have City Hall, the long-term City Hall, that's going to serve that city of 20, 30, 40, 50, 80,000 people. The police department, same thing. Future library, because the future library does have the ability to expand in its current location into the community room, but then the community room goes away. A community center. So, all of the facilities that you would expect to see parked with those municipal campuses would be here. There would be efficiencies of it. It would also be a central location for the community, easy to find, all the things that you look for in a municipal campus. The thought with this building as long-term is not going to be the permanent forever location of City Hall. But could potentially, you could see the expansion of the fire department. Some of the other spaces could be reworked for other purposes. You know, you could take these walls out, you could turn, expand it into community space, but there would be opportunities for reuse. In a situation where you're putting the addition on the back, it just gives you more options there with regards to where the flex is. Maybe at some point, PD needs to be built, but it's before, City Hall needs to get larger for a new building and maybe City Hall expands, or vice versa. Maybe you need a new City Hall, you build that first. Then that gives the PD an extended lifespan in this building and it becomes the, the public safety center for a period of time until the, this space gets outgrown. So, that's the general concept of how that might occur in this location.
So, what would your expectation be of expanding this?
It really depends on the growth of the community and the demand for services.
I'm going to put you in this, Bob, with the, kind of an unfair question, but I think that's...
10, 10 years, yes. 20 years, given our current growth projections. City Hall, we would not be able to, we would have to, for instance, relocate the council chambers someplace else. For instance, we can move it up to the community room, wire it. We'd have to have off-site council meetings, which isn't crazy. A lot of, there are a number of organizations do it, school boards, councils, et cetera. And that would give us additional expansion in this location. We could get maybe 20 years. I'm just spitballing. But at some point, we're going to outgrow that space. And with that, that still doesn't give us any additional storage. Right now, the only storage we have at City Hall is that little closet, which is half taken up by the server.
To this date, how much land have we acquired for a city campus?
Zero.
So, there'd be, so, we're talking about spending somewhere around $2 million on, a couple of minimal $10 million on building something that's probably, at least in my opinion, 10 to 20 years, pretty sure. I, I'm not comfortable with that and I wouldn't support it. But again, I respect this council. I, you know, I'm not going to tell anyone they're wrong. That's just, I'm just saying, this is my feeling. I think we're, we're spending money too quickly on projects such as this.
Let me add, though, one thing that brought up is we're keeping some interim and long-term, short-term. This very easily could be the last police department you'd ever have.
True.
And by simply, you can double the size almost of the occupancy by just taking up that councilor next door.
But it doesn't change what we can afford today.
But I think you'd be able to afford more in the future because you wouldn't have to ever spend that amount again where you know you will intend.
And that's a fair point. That's a fair point. So, I'm in the same caves with the roundhouse. I know where you're coming from. But again, we'll head 8% next year for, for a typical tax impact. And that's not going down. We're going to, I think, New Prague and Lakewood schools are both coming out with lovely rent rentals. Water bills are already red, well, they're continuing to get high each year. I mean, we're just, we're spending more money than we have spent. And that's my, that's my greatest concern.
And I will tell you that from our point of view, as it says in the memo, we're definitely just appreciative of hearing you saying you want to do something for us. So, there will be no, either way, for us, we're winners. So, I just add that and just sort of balancing pros and cons with it, so.
Just so I'm clear, you're cool with the renovation piece? I think that, so we're comfortable spending that. I am not, I'm not...
Yeah.
Tending to lean towards your way. I don't say that as hesitating at all. But I just want to make, no, no, but just to be clear though, that, yes. So, at 1. whatever to 1.6 or whatever. Because I do, I mean, I have the same questions with Tom or, I didn't say a whole lot, but, it's funny, when I talk to you on the phone, I say less than what I do here. It's really interesting.
Tom does most of that.
Anyway, because we, we have so many projects that we want to do and are doing. You know, I do get concerned that we're going to be like, holy crap, at one point. And then that's where I still throw it out there. I mean, to make sure that we're comfortable spending the 1.2 to 1.6 even and whether or not there's other areas that we should seriously consider cutting back on, knowing that this isn't going to be one of them, but is to make a hell of a... I mean, it makes me feel uneasy even, spending this much once.
When we did our, when we did our volume projections and we're using a certain number in our initial renovation projection, already far exceeded that, right? Would you ever say it was about a million dollars of your planning on?
Correct, but I do, we did put a lot of footnotes to that, that that, those were kind of swaying numbers based on very loose, loose, loose estimates, but...
I understand that.
But, right, but as we've done our financial planning, yes, that number's higher than it was for our financial planning.
Right.
Yep.
So, we're already going way, way over budget. I could also see the argument that, well, if we're going over budget, why not? You know, if it eats elephants, it won't choke up tail. But I don't like that when it comes to taxes. You've never heard that?
No.
No.
Is that a baker thing?
I guess, yeah, that comes up and, I mean, thanks.
I've never heard that.
So, I just want to say something. If we defer this to 10 to 15 years down the road, the cost for that construction, the new one, is going to be easily half again as much. We're also going to be looking in 10 or 15 years down the road at redoing multiple roadways in this community with major tax impacts. So, if we, if we defer everything that we need to do as a community in 10 or 15 years, even though we may not be around at the, on the council level, there's, power to you, Josh. I'm just saying, we may not be around. We're deferring this to somebody else to make hard decisions and, and to have huge tax impacts on this community.
Potential. But we're operating in a hypothetical in that case where right now, we have our current tax base that we need to look at and we have very little business growth. And then we have an industrial park that we wanted to develop for five years now and have got no revenue from it.
Okay, that was my point that I was going to make too. If we, sorry, I don't mean to cut you off.
No.
Sorry. But if we do something like this with the campus, it's going to be more attractive for businesses to come in. It's going to...
I, I disagree. I disagree. I don't think a business that's looking to relocate is going to say, wow, police station.
No, I don't mean the, wow, the police station. I just mean as a campus as a pool. And I just think that it will summarize the business.
Sure, but that, the same business, if they're going to invest a lot of money in going into elephant market, they're also going to look at where our tax rates are. And they're going to see that we are way over taxing for what we really need to be spending. So, you can have the reverse effect.
I would like our city to have a more diversified tax base. I would like our city to just have advanced the ball a little bit more on some of these projects that we have before we start, I mean...
before we start, I mean, doubling our budget for renovating a police station.
Okay, then what can you drop the list, so that we can do this?
That's a different discussion, I mean, that has different discussions.
Maybe we should look at that.
That, yeah, but right now, what's in front of us and what's staffing this direction on is the police department right now. And I don't think we're gonna advance the ball, we'll open up the entire budget, we'll get off every single project. And I will have no hard feelings if I'm the only person opposed against it, I respect the heck out of everyone here, so, I'm just stating my position right now.
Kate, what do you think about? I'm not, no, I don't mean to put, no, I'm not trying to put you on the spot, that's kind of random, I just.
Well, I'm just kind of looking at the estimated tax impact right here and, you know, I, I, I have to lean towards Joe, just to imagine, I think. I, I would love to see us have the one point nine to bring them over here, but financially speaking, we don't have the funds to do that.
Josh?
Go either way.
I know, I know, sir, because I could argue, if we don't have the funds to do one point nine, we don't have the funds to do one point six.
Let's do one point six. Do it either way, it's a nothing, and the grand scheme of things.
John, you're full in support of new construction, right? Or are you on the fence in any way?
I just, I just hate to see us defer costs when we're, we're gonna incur an extreme amount of cost above and beyond what we would do if we were to take care of the issue now. And, you know, and, and I, and I just see, you know, ten to fifteen years from now, this community is gonna get seriously hit with a huge tax impact. And, it's, it's, if we, 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 we did the same thing with the roadways, no offense to engineering or anybody else, we did the same thing with the roadways. We didn't do what we should have done to maintain our roadways, to get, to, to stop from doing all of this reconstruct.
Well, and, and to take it up step, that's council's past, which could have directed that way.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm not, again, I'm not pointing anything, I'm just saying that it was deferred. Now we're, we're, we're.
Which really doesn't differ the odds from prior.
And, and in fifteen more years, it's gonna be twice the impact of the roadways. So if we're doing the same thing for building projects, and we're saying, oh, okay, I can afford one point six million to go renovate a building that might get us to ten to fifteen years. And then on top of that, to reuse that building at some point for a community center or something else, it's gonna have to be remodeled again.
Yep.
So, you're gonna tear down all those walls that we just put in, in fifteen years, to, to have it for some other use. And, and then rebuild something else, because you, you gotta redo the flooring, you gotta redo the ceiling, you gotta do, it's everything, right? And on top of that, you gotta pay three or four million dollars to relocate them over here, so, I mean.
I'm, I'm one hundred percent agreeing with John.
I, I just can't see deferring it, just because we don't wanna propose a tax hike that's, that's going to take care of it. And, and I get it, we have an eight percent tax increase that's coming up, um, which, that's if we can cut, um, but.
And we're not bringing up two, we've only brought up one, so I mean, we could potentially make something come up that one.
And, and just roughly, I mean, if you can cut a thousand square feet off that building, off the addition back here, that's thirty thousand dollars. Now we're talking, instead of six hundred thousand dollar difference, we're talking a three hundred thousand dollar difference.
That's a Todd question, could you have the same functionality if we cut a thousand square feet out of that? You can't make the garage any smaller, you gotta have, you're then taking.
We, we did, uh, I will make a caveat that we did, uh, look at this addition a little bit quicker than we did the, the other project. Um, I'm pretty sure we can take five hundred square feet out of it and not have any difference, um, beyond that, I'd have to take a look at it.
But then again, you're taking, you're, obviously you're looking, now instead of twenty-one officers, it might just be fifteen or eighteen.
May not be a linear cost rejection, reduction either yet, I agree, the same trade has to show up whether you build ten square feet or ten thousand. Same excavator, the plumber, the masons, so, there's not a linear reduction probably.
That's, that's very true.
I also don't think it's apples to apples in terms of, well, it's, it's not automatic that our costs are gonna go, that if we defer this for ten, fifteen years or whatever, that it's just gonna be exponentially that much more expensive, I mean, I think there are other factors to it on that. Like I said earlier, right, hopefully, we're gonna have a better tax base and a more diverse tax base that can support that.
I don't know what the long-term plans of this building actually is, I mean, and no one really knows that, I mean, we have some plans, but this police department is a perfect example of how plans have constantly changed over years. Um, it was two thousand and fifteen, I think, when we did the tour of this and we all agreed, yeah, we gotta do this this year. And plans have changed, there's been more different Band-Aids that have been put on us. I don't think a renovation is a Band-Aid, I think it's not the ideal place that we would like for a police department, but it's a heck of a lot better than what it is now, it's a lot more functional, um, I don't think it's like we're asking the police department to operate out of a trailer park. No offense to anyone in trailer parks, but you get what I'm saying, it's, I don't know.
Well, and I think the worst, well, one of the worst cases of my brain is we move here and then fifteen years down the road, we say we wanna change the plan.
That scares the hell out of me.
We've knocked down a brand new thing that we.
We're probably still making payments on it at that point.
Could I make one, uh, statement about the existing PD, um, while it is a, a more economical solution.
I do think that because we're doing a lot of renovation and there's, uh, plumbing issues, um, with a police station, uh, we could not design the building to keep the plumbing in the same location that it is currently. There probably are better uses for that building where you could keep the plumbing in the slab on grade where it's at right now. So, I just wanna point that out, that there are some complications by building the, designing the police station in that, in that building right now, whereas maybe another use probably is less complicated.
And we're, we're in a tough spot.
Yeah, but that's our jobs, I think we're all okay with that, but.
Is there anything more to debate, or should we just kinda, will, anyone wanna talk any further on it? You got, John, John and Don are in the new construction. Yeah? You guys know where I'm at.
I don't see you tearing this building down, ever.
Yeah.
I think this is gonna be your emergency management, where you have your police and fire and city hall will be somewhere different. My opinion, my opinion only.
No, and, and it's a fair opinion, but it's still going into the future, right? But the future has more options, I think, is what.
That's kinda what we fell on after looking here and there as a group, well, I mean, it took a lot of just talking through, that anything you do over there, you're gonna have to redo again.
Josh and Kate, where you guys at?
This is hard.
Uh, I go, I go back to when, when we were here and, I mean, my gut right off the bat said it was optioning.
I think. That was.
The, the, the move it here, hold that place over there, because I, I think that's gonna be the, the long-term thing of it, that it gets lined up. I am nervous about the overspend and I'm nervous about all that too. Long-term value though, and what, what our ultimate goals are, and if I'm gonna throw away one point six, I'd rather throw away, not throw away, I'd rather invest in the two or whatever it is and have it moved closer to where it's ultimately going to be. Cause if, if we can't afford one point six, then, I mean, that because of this discussion, we should talk all the things.
Yeah, so you're doing construction. Kate, you kinda don't even have to say anything.
I, I don't, I don't really have to, but, you know, when I first walked in here, I knew what my gut was telling me to do.
And, you know, I, I, first thing out of my mouth is I can go both ways. John brought up some very good points, Joey brought up some very good points, the amount of money is scary, the impact on taxes is scary. Not having to put this burden in ten or fifteen years on somebody else, maybe is a good thing. So, I'm gonna go, sorry, thanks, my gut, and we, we go.
Yeah, step in that direction.
Um, we do, so at this point, given the direction we received from the council, unless you feel our eyes, we would prepare the agreement with legal daily for doing the construction. Bid, and potentially construction management, uh, architectural management on, on the project, and that would come through a subsequent meeting, probably the next one as a consent agenda item.
You could make it business generalisms.
I could, yes, absolutely.
Well, and in that, there will be a, I assume, more thorough analysis, uh, and not to say that it was super quick, but it was referenced as this was a super quick thing to put together, so we could actually see the costs go down, or we could see it go up and be like, okay, that's really stupid, we're not gonna do that.
Correct, so the, the only interim step is you could have, um, and, and Todd helped me with this, but we could have them go to the same level of design that we did with the renovation. We would still probably get some, and we'd go up, we could reestimate it, is that likely to yield a different per square foot price or not? If we have, if we have more detail in design or not?
And I guess, I, I don't care if it goes down, I do care if it goes up though, I mean, so I don't wanna see it go up after a more thorough analysis, I don't wanna see it go up, yeah.
I think, um, we can structure it so that once we get to a level of, of BD design development, before we go into construction documents, that we can have a estimate and bring it back to you for approval at that point in time.
All right? So, moving on to general business item D. Approachment agreement.
Approachment agreement, online, passing up, talking about that particular item.
During, the, one of the conditions during the approval of the P-Till plat was that the developer attorney, the approach agreement with the city. Um, the design plans that always indicated retaining home that would be located in our city drainage and utility easements. And whenever anybody puts anything on the easement, we require the Supreme Agreement, except we signed that city. Um, and therefore, you know, we were requesting to be approved in agreement and a copy of this provided, it wasn't available when we had been drafted, you know, the time that we approved the plat documents. City attorney's office drafted the document, the last page shows kind of a clip of that easement area, um. And, or maybe the drawing, the drawing might not be included in, in what you have before you, but.
Yep.
Okay, that's it, it's just the highlighted, what's highlighted on that drawing, so, request that, approve the agreement.
So long as it shows that we can't more than one, or is it still retaining more on both areas?
Uh, they believe at this point that the retaining wall in the twin home area of the plat can be removed. That one was not in a drainage and utilities, but it was on private, entirely private property, so that would not require the similar agreement.
So this figure's showing the same lots, right?
Yes, it is.
And the red is where the wall would be?
Yeah, it's just two, uh, clips of two different drawings, one is the final plat drawing on the bottom and on the top, it's a clip of more of a construction plans. For reference.
Questions or discussions?
Any motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the encumberment agreement.
Motion, Mr.?
Say it.
Saying by the bird, on favor, I, that's the hands.
So is that the official name of the road then, Pizza Trail?
Pizza Trail.
I want Josh Burke drivers.
Sounds like Pizza Trail.
Presumably that was moved from consent to general business was legal, I just wanna, so, I don't have any objections to legal services. I ask, and I just kinda like this going forward and new recommendations on things like this. At least in the written report, there's just a rationale given as to why a decision was made, so.
Yeah, apologize for that, you know, we provided the rationale and the council directed us to prepare the contract, so, I think for efficiency, we didn't include it, but it's something we should have. So, um, to reiterate from that previous discussion, we had gone out and solicited, um, proposals for civil, civil legal services, um, for the city, basically the city attorney, um, our prosecution has done otherwise. Our current policy related to, um, core consultants is that every three years, at least every three years, we evaluate them. Um, and we've done that over time and, and the councils repeatedly said that they were okay with the legal services we were receiving. However, the council had decided, um, a couple, about a year ago, a little over a year ago, that at least every nine years, we need to go out for RFPs, just as a matter of good public policy to make sure that we're still receiving the best value and service for, for what we're paying for. So, we started, went through engineering services, legal was the next one, um, on the list, and we went out for proposals. Um, we had talked with the council to get an idea of the characteristics of what you were looking for in a city attorney's firm, and we identified eight firms that we sent out proposals and solicited proposals from. Four firms responded, um, to those, three, three firms responded to those proposals. Um, uh, of the three firms, uh, there were different strategies, I mean, all three are very reputable firms, they represent municipalities, they have some depth. Um, but there was different approaches to how they provided the services. One of the firms proposed to give us a team, um, I'll characterize it this, one of their bright, young, shining stars that's coming up, but they didn't have the same depth of experience as the, the lead attorney on, on those teams. Um, they also didn't have quite the same depth that the other firms did with regards to, um, his practice, and they weren't the cheapest firm. Uh, they were quickly eliminated from consideration, the two remaining firms, um, were Campbell Knutson, our current attorney firm, and another firm. Uh, that firm took a little bit of a different approach, they had one city attorney who I think was the city attorney for like sixteen cities. And then they had a team of specialists underneath that. Campbell Knutson took a different approach, you have a city attorney, you have a backup, and then they have individuals within their firm that specialize in particular areas that may be pulled in on your particular needs. So, for instance, in Campbell Knutson's firm, Andrea tends to be the HR and land use person, uh, development, contracts, real estate type person. They have somebody else that specializes in code for, in code enforcement, other people that specialize in utilities and those types of things. When we looked at the two firms, the committee that was reviewing it, which consisted of the city administrator, the assistant city administrator, the, uh, community development specialist, um, who, and two council people. Um, staff people who most regularly work with the city attorney and two council people to provide oversight, feedback from the council's perspective. It was felt that the model that was provided by Campbell Knutson was a better fit. The interesting part in the conclusion we arrived on going through it is when you look at the other firms and the people that were on those teams, they tended to be people who were bright, had good resumes, but they didn't have the same level of experience as the senior person from the other finalist firm, and Campbell Knutson. It was really clear that we have somebody who's a senior principal in Andrea's firm because we were her first city.
Very first?
We were her very first city, and so as a result, we continue to have her over the years as she's grown professionally and experienced in a number of other ways, and so we still have access. From a price standpoint, there were differences between the firms, um, Campbell Knutson was not the most expensive, they weren't the least expensive, and a lot of it came down to assumptions as to who in the firm is providing services, whether it was, um, Lee. whether it was legal assistance or the attorney and, and so on, so forth. But generally speaking, we found that the firms were very comparable with regards to, with regards to their rates and the proposals for services for, for rates. Ultimately, the decision was to go with Campbell Knutson because we receive regularly the most experienced attorney who had areas of expertise in the areas which we had the greatest need and the institutional knowledge that their firm has for the city, since Campbell Knutson's been representing the city, I think, since the eighties.
Yeah.
So, and Andrea's been the city attorney both for the pre-merge city and the current city since nineteen ninety-one.
Ninety-two.
Ninety-two. So for those reasons, that was the deciding, that was the deciding factor for why we made the selection.
Anyone have any questions? Anyone want to make a motion?
Motion to approve the agreement for legal services between City Development Market and Campbell Knutson.
Motion by Bird. Second by Timmerman. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes unanimously. And last item on general business.
This is basically as we've updated the council previously, as we're going through and look at ordinances and newer ordinances with fresh eyes with Linda and her current position. As she was learning the liquor license thing, she was going through and identified that we still require our restaurants who have liquor licenses to provide information related to their level of food sales to demonstrate that it's their primary source of income related to business and that they're a restaurant and not a bar. That basically goes back to legislation or state statute that doesn't exist anymore, where you are limited on the number of liquor licenses you could have for bars in town. You could have additional ones for restaurants, but they were then required to show that they're a restaurant by showing that their primary source of income is food sales and not liquor. As things have changed over time, those restrictions are in place, and it's just essentially legacy language that's still sitting within the code that hasn't been eliminated. And quite honestly, it's not necessary and an unnecessary burden on those businesses, so we're just proposing to eliminate it. Linda consulted with Andrea, she agreed that it wasn't a necessary item within statute, it's not required. And so we're recommending that it simply be eliminated as part of, as part of just keeping our code up to date.
I remember this coming up with the Speedway thing. Was there any connection, any overlap, anything there that needs to be changed or tweaked? Or was that just part of the discussion? Because we were trying to determine if they needed a liquor license for when they're selling it inside the thing or outside the thing. I just remember this topic coming up.
That was more about ownership issues.
About number, whether or not they were separate premises or not and the ownership of the tubes.
Motion to adopt ordinance number two hundred.
Motion by Councilmember Bird.
Second.
And by its member Schenberg. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Epstein.
Oh, yeah, you got Epstein, yeah. I forgot, that was the whole reason we pulled it.
That was the whole reason we pulled it.
All right, motion passes four, zero, one. I don't know if that's the right way of doing it, but. All right, we already covered reports. So discussion by council.
The policy committees are wrapping up for Metro Cities and League of Minnesota Cities. There's been, I don't know, I guess you could say some interesting discussions or whatever. At the Metro Cities meeting yesterday, there were tenant protection, there was tenant protection language that was added. I don't think it's going to have a major impact. I made it very clear, while I agree with it personally, that I wasn't really going to represent the city at all. I didn't have to vote on it because there was enough support that I just kept shut my mouth quiet on it. But there was enough, I think, discussion there that, you know, I connected with Tom, you know, before, just to kind of get his take or. But it might be a decent discussion to have in the future as we continue to grow and just a policy type thing. But otherwise, we're making friends with certain folks out there, City Minneapolis and others that I think could benefit in the future and pushing back on some others that need to be pushed back on, but.
I was told you were very sharp and very bright by someone.
I heard otherwise, but yeah, I guess. He's just different language, probably reflecting the same type of behavior.
It's probably the same. All right. Any other discussion? Want to make a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second by Bird, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.